Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the joint meeting with the Select Board and Sewer Commission. It's Wednesday, March 6, 2024, in a quiet meeting room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee MASH, 02649. It's broadcast live on the local cable, Channel 8, and we are streaming live on the Town of Mashpee website. And it is now 6:30, and I'd like to convene the joint meeting with the Select Board and the Sewer Commission in open session, and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) May I also have a moment of silence, please?
Thank you. All right. Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to jump right into this, and I guess I'll hand it off to Mr. Collins to start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that a lot of people have been waiting for the particulars on Phase 2, and tonight, GHD is prepared to make a presentation to the Select Board and to the Sewer Commission, as well as to the public. And also, I would defer to the Wastewater Management Superintendent, Jared Meter, who has some specific information that he will bring up after the presentation.
Thank you. Tonight, we're here with a clear goal, and that's just to try to gain...
Just to make sure they can hear you, that's all.
I think you can hear me now. We're here with a clear goal, and that's just to gain endorsement from both the Select Board and the Sewer Commissioners on the article that's going forward. We've come down to a dollar amount. Sandy's going to give a quick presentation, you know, current status of Phase 1, and what Phase 2 will consist of, and then the dollar amount. And then I'd like to follow that up with just some key points as to what we're looking at and how we came to the decision we did to present this price, and hopefully give everybody a clear understanding of what our goals are.
Good evening. As Jared said, I'm here to give you an update on the watershed nutrient nitrogen management plan, but really, a status of the implementation of that plan. Starting with Phase 1, I'm going to take a look at what we've, where we are with Phase 1, the status of it, and then go into what we're really here to talk about, which is Phase 2. So, Phase 1, as you know, is a $50 million, $54 million appropriation, and is designed and constructed. In fact, in October of 2022, the town awarded three construction contracts, and they're still under construction. When this phase is complete, we'll be removing septic nitrogen loading from the Pompanas Bay. That was the goal of Phase 1. This Phase 1 also includes the incorporation of the Water Resource Recovery Facility, or WRRF. And we're including two sewer service areas. If you look at the map, you can see the north area in green, and the south area in orange. I'll talk about the purple area in a minute. In fact, I'll talk about it right now. This is what we call Phase 1A. Phase 1A included what we call alternates in Phase 1, that we didn't, the $54 million wouldn't cover those. So, we couldn't award the entire service area, but it was important for the town to incorporate all of Phase 1. So, you appropriated an additional $12 million. And on March 6, that's today, the town is actually releasing the plans, we release the plans, to the public for bidding. So, we're going into the bid phase 4, Phase 1A. And the parcels in purple are the ones that are being served by this phase. Includes a big chunk at the Brewster Road area, one pump station, some low-pressure sewer, and some gravity sewer. And our schedule for getting Phase 1 totally implemented, the collection system, is on track to be done on time and on budget in December of 2024. That's this year. The properties can be connected to this system starting in January and into April. They'll be brought on, not all in one fell swoop, but over a few months, so that we can start up the biological treatment processes at the plant. They have to be tested, and they need food, which comes from the wastewater. The plant itself will be substantially complete. That means that the town will be running it and operating it, and that should happen in May of 2025, next year, with the contractor offsite and the project complete by July. Phase 1A, the additional parcels, should be ready to be put online in November of 2026. So, that's the status update for Phase 1. And the goals for Phase 1 were to build the core central sewer infrastructure serving Pompanas Bay, and that is the treatment plant. It's the heart of your system so far. And also, build the first sections of the collection system. And Phase 1, including the 1A, is anticipated to meet 13% of your current nitrogen removal goals for restoring water quality in Pompanas Bay. Now, moving on to Phase 2, the primary purpose of Phase 2 is to expand the service area that feeds this plant. So, we want to make the best use of this plant we can. And you will recall, in July of last year, we all were in this room, and you selected the Phase 2 area to be served. It's shown in pink on this map. The Phase 1 area is shown in blue. We are expanding the sewer service area to the north and to the south. Not only will be, will we be positively impacting Pompanas Bay, but also the Mashpee, Wakebee, and Santuit Pond watersheds, excuse me. In January of this year, the town initiated the design for Phase 2, and that design will include collection systems, up to eight pump stations, equipment additions to the treatment plant, and four additional open sands beds at the treatment plant. And this design is underway. The goals of Phase 2, I think number one is to make use of that, of your investment in your treatment plant. Expand the Phase 1 collection system to the north and south. And when we're done, and treating wastewater from these areas, we should be reducing the existing nitrogen loading to the Pompanas Bay by additional 29% for a total of 42%, including Phase 1 and 2. The infrastructure plan for Phase 2 is as follows. We have the north area, and if you're looking at your handouts, this is impossible to see on the slide, but there is an 8.5 by 11 map in the back of your packet, as well as the boards here in the room, so you can take a closer look. It includes about 12.6 miles of pipe, five pump stations, and the area includes 747 parcels. The benefits from serving this area include removing the septic load from the Mashpee River and the Pompanas Bay watershed, and as I said, the Mashpee-Wakebee Pond watershed and the Santuit Pond watershed. Serving this area should reduce, should meet 20% of Mashpee's current nitrogen removal goals for the Pompanas Bay. And the cost of serving this area is $50.8 million. The southern service area has seven miles of pipe, three pump stations, and 393 parcels. The benefits from this area are to remove the septic load, again, from the Pompanas Bay. And one additional is, this is very close to the bay itself, so it's a shorter travel time, and your environmental positive impacts will be seen more quickly than in some of your sewer areas that are further upstream. And this area is anticipated to meet 9% of Mashpee's current nitrogen removal goals. Costs $31.2 million for this, for this section. We're also making some improvements to the treatment plan itself. It will expand the capacity, using, making use of the existing buildings, as well as the existing tankage. You may remember that we built all four process tanks. Phase 1 makes use of one train. Each train has two tanks, so there's eight tanks, four trains. And we're making use of one train in Phase 1. We're going to be opening up Train 2 for Phase 2, and including two new, the new NBR units for that train. We're also adding four additional sand beds. Four are being built right now. You can see the picture on the left is construction of your sand bed. Looks kind of like a beach, but it'll get fine-grated and with some berms in there. And that pipe sticking out is your effluent pipe, which hasn't yet been cut down. But that's where your treated effluent will be discharged into the ground. So, you have four for Phase 1. You're going to have eight when you're done with Phase 2. And the cost of those improvements are $14.1 million. So, let's take another look at the costs, another way to present them. What this table represents is the Phase 2 estimated project cost in $2026, which is the midpoint of construction. We updated this cost very recently, and mainly, we wanted to make use of the recent, more recent bid tabs, tabs we've received since July of last year. We also increased our estimated inflation rate to 5%. We were using 3% before. We've increased it to 5%. Material costs are still unpredictable. They're better than they were, but they're still a bit volatile. And the labor pool is lessening. It's harder and harder to find labor, these contractors, and there's more and more work being bid out, especially on Cape Cod. So, if you, the table breaks down the areas I presented a little bit further, and the total estimated cost is $96.1 million. Again, that's in $2026. Please note that during design, we will look at cost-saving measures to protect this project. We're looking at reducing the number of pumping stations, potentially, also refining the force main and piping routing, and fine-tuning the size of the structures that are anticipated for the treatment plant. Well, the next steps for Phase 2, I think all of you know that you are on D, this project is on DEP's Intended Use Plan, or IUP, for 2024. The final plan did come out, I believe. The town is, to town, in order to accept this loan, needs to appropriate the funds before June. I think that's scheduled for your town meeting in May. That's why we're here. And then the town needs to formally accept the DEP offer by June of 20, of this year. The design should be complete by winter of 2025, meaning next February, March timeframe. At that time, the permits will need to be in place. Easements need to be in place for the pump station sites and the private roads, and of course, the construction documents need to be complete. After we get through a bid phase, then construction should begin in summer of 2025. And once Phase 2 is complete, you will have the sewer infrastructure in place to meet 42% of Mashpee's current nitrogen goals to restore water quality in Pompanas Bay. And that's the end of the presentation. Questions?
Does any, you want to kind of...
By all means, thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you so much, Sandy. That was fantastic. It was, it gives a perspective on where we need to go. And just to get a clarification, as you ended the presentation, you said that once Phase 2 is complete, we will, the town will then realize the reduction of 42%. By when might that be projected? Do we have like a completion date? The, what I was confused about is that the construction would begin in the summer of 2025, but the projected ending of construction would be by when?
I haven't, we haven't gone through that yet, but it's going to be at least two years. It could be, it could be two and a half, three years, but probably two years.
Not to hold you to it, but just to get a general idea of, so perhaps completion by 2027?
Yeah.
Oh, one other question. You did say that as you're going into the design phase, that one of the things you'd be looking for would be cost reduction in reducing the numbers of pump stations. What are the consequences of that, or what does that mean?
And what I did mention is that we aren't reducing the service area.
What does that mean?
Meaning that we're not going to, we have no intention of carving off a section of a service area. The goal is to serve what we show on these maps. If we reduce a pump station, we might find that, well, we've, we've planned to put a pump station in a certain lot, and as we get into design, we may be able to find out it's only serving a few places. We can have a different way to serve those places, maybe go a little deeper, or possibly use grinder pumps for those areas.
So, as you get further into the design, and then, so that's almost a parallel between the design and the construction, you know, early phase construction, new design, and you begin to figure out where then cost savings can be afforded without reducing service area and without reducing quality?
Yeah, it'll be during the design, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Other questions from my Sewer Commission? Hearing none.
I do have one question.
Madam Spross.
Thank you. Looking on the map for the north project, and as I'm looking at the homes that are being serviced in the plan, you see other places that are just as close to the water, and they seem to be at the end of the line, and why didn't we extend it to those homes that were close to the water?
I'm going to let Anastasia field this one.
Sure. So, those are reserved for additional sewer sheds in the future. So, we wanted to make it continuous, building from the plant going in the line to be the most cost-effective, and then those areas would be future sewer-ing if needed. So, an important part of your program is the adaptive management program, as you put in this infrastructure, to conduct the water quality monitoring, to see how the system's reacting, and then making the decision of which additional future phases of sewer-ing may be needed. Does that answer your question?
Sort of. I'm looking over here at Timber Lane Drive. So, you're stopping in about six or eight homes right on the water on Timber Lane Drive, and you stop at a certain point, and you don't continue on?
Yes. So, there's, there's two reasons for that. One, those are scheduled to go by gravity to a future sewer shed, or to a future pump station. The other is, we only have so much capacity at the plant. So, the goal was to maximize the amount of parcels for the most cost-effective way to get that load to the plant within its capacity.
It's just that it would seem that you'd want to sewer the homes that are really close to the water, because obviously, it's a very short distance, and the pollution is going to have a bigger impact that way. All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the Sewer Commission?
I have one more.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, I have another question, just as another clarification. I'm familiar with the Pompanas Bay watershed, but not specifically breaking out the Mashpee-Wakebee Pond and Asshumet Pond watersheds. How different are they from the Pompanas Bay larger watershed?
They're part of the Pompanas Bay.
Were you going to explain it?
Yes. So, they are both subwatersheds of the Pompanas Bay.
Okay. So, it's just a more clarification and more detail about which parts of the watershed then would be extended?
Yes. And so, you'll get the benefit to both, which is an advantage.
Then the people in both Mashpee-Wakebee and Asshumet will be extremely happy. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Sewer Commission. Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Turn it back over to the Select Board.
Thank you, Chair. Kayla, you have any?
Sure. So, you said there would be a 29% nitrogen redu, an additional 29% nitrogen reduction. And you mentioned particularly on the, on the south side of the plan, that that, because of its proximity to the water, if I understood correctly, we would see the effects of that more quickly? Did I? Okay. So, we're looking at removing over 42% altogether?
Yeah. 20%, I believe, is coming from the north, and then, yeah.
Okay. The other question I had was, and you said this, and I didn't jot it down, what are we removing from the Santuit watershed? You mentioned the Santuit River.
Do we have those numbers?
Yeah.
We don't.
I don't have a mental...
Oh, I thought you, I thought you said something about the Santuit watershed.
It's the Santuit Pond, it's not Santuit River.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's my first question.
Okay. Carol, David?
I'm all set at the moment.
Okay.
One question I have is, does the 5, is the 5% inflation cost enough?
That's a good question.
I mean, that sounds like a really low number for me. Like, everybody that I've talked to says, in other areas of construction, they carry in almost 25%.
Well, that, that, that would not, that may be for something. But for a project this big, it's going to get dampened. Some things will go 2%, some things will go 10%. I think right now, we're seeing, Bob, weren't you saying 3.5% about right now? So, overall, so we felt 5% was, was, was healthy.
I do have something. You did say we're having a problem with workers?
Sure.
That, well, that...
Yes. There, there is a lot of...
It's going to slow it down.
Well, it might raise the prices. There's a lot of work on the street. Cape has a wastewater problem, and there's a lot of wastewater projects going on. We have contract, good contractors, they can do it. That's not the problem. But they're struggling, you know, they compete for, compete for labor, so they pay them. Good for the labor.
One other question I have is, you know, Mashpee considering petitioning to be an environmental justice community. I've said in the past that, that Mashpee, if you look at Mashpee from strictly the environmental issues, Mashpee in its entirety should absolutely be an environmental justice community. You have base, you have surface waters, PFOS, and everything else, and then you have the nitrogen and nutrients. You know, the nitrogen mitigation planning doesn't even address freshwater impediments like phosphorus and things. And so, when you look at all the collective issues that we have with water quality, not just respective of our bays, but also within the freshwater environment, Mashpee is an environmental justice, it should be an environmental justice community. Having, if we were to petition as an environmental justice community, then I think it opens up additional revenue streams through state programs and things, that it would make, maybe make us eligible for, what was, there was one I was looking at today, priority projects and things like that, and things through the Executive Office of Administrative Affairs at the state level. There's, there's programs out there that I think maybe could offset some, some of this, and might even help if we were an environmental justice committee. It might even help address some betterments and things for, for residents as well. Has, has the town considered any of that?
Timing number?
You can, anytime you can go after, you know, petition to be an environmental justice community. I know for myself, you know, on a federal level, any tribal reservations are considered environmental justice communities. So, anywhere the tribe locations are, then the state should recognize that and acknowledge environmental justice communities, that being tribal community within pockets of reservation lands, if it can help. But I think from an environmental perspective, it would help to be designated completely the entirety of the town as a, as a environmental justice community.
Mr. Whedon, I'd love to lend our assistance. I know members of the Sewer Commission, it's a top concern of putting the tax burden on our taxpayers. So, if that's a route to more funding, I'm sure every single one of us, myself included, would love to follow up on that.
I'd like to ask the Environmental, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs to come and, and present to us and explain to us how the process works for petitioning to be an environmental justice community, and, and explore benefits of doing so.
Yeah, definitely.
That's a great idea.
I second it.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
That was a good one.
You wanted, you had to...
Yes. So, we are already currently looking into other funding sources, but tonight's reason is just basically gain the endorsement. At the next Commissioner's meeting, I've already spoken with the Chair, we're, we're going to discuss some of these sources and at least get permission to explore certain areas, such as betterments, just to explore. We're not saying there's going to be, but we need to have ready for town meeting options. Now, to address some of the, the previous questions, and I just want to point out some key points. I know when we saw that 96.1, everybody went, wow. I went, wow. But they did exactly what I asked. One of the key things when I sat down with GHD for Phase 2 is, I wanted, I told them I'm not going back for any more funding. This has got to be it. Part of the confusion people get when Phase 1 and Phase 1A is, am I in, am I out? Why do we have to borrow more money? And that just creates a sense of inorganization, wasteful spending, not watching the price. Say, give me the cost. If it's a maybe, make it a yes. At least we're, no, we're not going to ask for more money. Now, from this point on, and we've already begun to, we've identified quite a few potential cost-saving measures, whether it be change a pipe to a different direction, instead of going left, we'll go right. Maybe remove a lift station. Maybe we add a couple more grinders in a neighborhood and not go 20 feet deep with a pipe. Once you get past a certain point of pipe, you're tripling the cost right off the bat. And maybe if we go low pressure, instead of using an 8-inch main, now we only have to use a 4 or a 3 or 2-inch main. Alternate routes, there's a lot of connecting land in the town, a lot of connected land. Identifying ways that maybe instead of tearing up the main road and stopping traffic and repaving every day, because it's the winter months and we need to have pavement down there, so when they plow, they don't tear it all up, maybe we go behind the houses instead of front of the houses. So, these are the areas that we're looking at, which will save us money on police details, and then just aggravation. So, I asked them to give me this high cost, and then that way, at the end, no matter what, we should be successful, and we stay below that money. But I do not, I will not go back and ask for more money, and I don't want to sacrifice the size of the project. You know, we don't need to downsize it. If this is what we're going to do, we're going to commit to it. It's never cheaper than it is today. But it's my job, and, and everybody here, I think is definitely on board, that, you know, there's traditional easy ways to do it. It might be easier just to run down the middle of the road. Takes a little bit more work to gain easement, to maybe cut across to go to the back. Let's do that little extra bit of work, so we can get to that townpiece land, and everybody's on board with it. We've been clear, and, and my intent is, or it will not go over the 96.1. And the next step, like I said, is I will be exploring these cost-saving measures, and before town meeting, we plan to have a presentation ready with some options. I don't think we should show up to town meeting with, this is it. This is the way. We're paying for it. Let's, let's have some options out there. Maybe betterment isn't the best choice. Maybe we can still find alternative ways of paying for this, and we'll continue, even as the project's going on. We'll always try to look for, you know, other methods of funding. I actually heard a, a great term today from somebody, and that, you know, this is an unfunded mandate that's been given to Cape Cod, and we're trying to do the best we can, and we'll still produce, pursue other funding sources to fund this mandate. But when you see that 96 point, it is a wow, but I don't want to go back and here we go, what the heck, you guys aren't managing this project properly. This is the high end. We will not ask for more money.
I...
I do a few, after the town meeting.
I just want to remind the board that this implementation is consistent with the 2015 nitrogen management plan. It is consistent with the so-called Option 9 that you did have and that you approved, which is slightly different than the Phase 2 in scope, but essentially the same. The town has notified the state in regards to the pursuit of the watershed permit, and the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund has notified towns to expect a 12% subsidy for projects authorized in 2024. The trust is adopting new procedures to increase the principal forgiveness to 25%. Combined with 3.3% principal forgiveness from the Mass Clean Water Trust, the town could expect to see up to 28.3% of the project cost funded by sources external to the town. The town has also slated to receive a 0% RSF loan pursuant to the DEP 2024 project funding list, and the debt service for approximately 71.7% of the project... from the Mass Clean Water Trust, the town could expect to see up to 28.3% of the project cost funded by sources external to the town. Uh, the town has also slated to receive a 0% RSF loan pursuant to the DEP 2024 project funding list. And the debt service for approximately 71.7% of the project would be paid by the taxpayers. Again, I just want to reiterate that this project is consistent with the scope that was authorized by both boards sitting here. Um, and the only thing that we're not going to be able to articulate um, immediately is the average cost because betterments would play an instrumental factor. I would respectfully request that an action be taken, because it's a critical action, as soon as possible by the Sewer Commission, including but not limited to having a special meeting, if you need to, in order to, uh, make that decision. Obviously, consistent with the posting of the open meeting law.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Kayla? The town manager said some of the things I was going to say.
Me too.
I, I do think we can feel confident knowing that, um, the Cape and Islands Water Management Trust will, will be at 25% based on everything I've heard sitting in meetings. I, I would feel very, very confident saying that we're going to have that subsidy come in. So essentially, if you're looking at that and we're talking about money that's external to the town, that 96 million becomes like 68 million. So it's, it's much less expensive. And I appreciate the wastewater superintendent um, making sure that that is the final price. That's really helpful. But I think as we're looking at only paying 71.7% and things getting more and more costly every year, this makes a lot more sense.
I would bet on that before the Red Sox making the playoffs.
Well said. So I just have a, a quick one. You mentioned earlier about the labor challenges. That being said, I also have heard delay in parts. Have you, have you seen the since sunlight?
I haven't seen anything or anything as far as construction type for the collection system. That was more of, you know, at the plant, the motor control centers is what the delay was. I haven't heard anything as far as piping and-
Well, yeah, the piping issue, which was very bad three years ago, is eased up. Um, that's why I was hesitant to answer the construction length, is we take that into account. What happened at the plant was shocking to me because I was counting, you know, I had a year for this stuff to come in and it usually comes in in seven, 10 months. And they, they came up with 24 months and I just, yeah, wait a minute. And they backed, they, they managed to work around that to get, at least it wasn't 10 months later. It was seven and a half months later. So as we get closer to when we're actually going to put it on the street, we, we, we call our contacts and find out what it takes to get stuff in, talk to the contractors, and we build that into the schedule because time is money.
With all the other towns doing the same thing we're doing, is everybody grabbing at material?
There's competition for it. There's contractors out there that buy it up, they have it. Um, you know, if they've got the volume of work to do it, they try to stay ahead of it. I mean, I'm not a contractor, but, um, it, it is easing up, but there are things that can still get you.
So as far as, um, the time schedule that you presented tonight, that's-
The design is fine.
The delay in parts and that's in there?
A modest.
The, the design, the design, I didn't really give it construction. You know, I said maybe two years. Um, the design, we don't have, we're not waiting on materials for design.
Okay, I was talking, I, I thought the delay in parts were, was some parts in the plant?
The motor control.
Yeah, it was the motor control center in the plant.
In the plant.
That's not the collection system or if you just-
And that, that impacts when you can bring something online. So if we go through something, if we go through something similar at the plant, your capa-, you know, maybe your ability to, it'll impact your ability to, when you actually can open up the next train of your treatment process.
Okay.
But it would still get on the street at the same time. It just may be instead of a two-year project, it might be a three-year project or a two-and-a-half-year project. If you give the contractor time, that helps them keep their price down too.
Gotcha. So just to summarize, um, real quick, again, 50.8 million for the upper part of Phase Two, correct? 31.2 million for the lower part?
Okay.
And then 14.1 million is for the treatment center?
That sounds right.
And, and then we talked about, Mr. Collins mentioned and Michaela mentioned, the reduced debt service to the town would be about 28.3%. Right now, that's what we're looking at as a reduction to the taxpayers of Mashpee. That's not, not your-
That's not directed to me.
You don't have to answer that one. Am I correct?
I would feel confident in saying that we were looking at a 25% subsidy.
Right, and then it's the-
And the 3.3.
3.3 is from the clean water.
So 71.7 is what it comes to.
Okay. Uh, and I also just want to commend you on, um, the maps. Finally, I've been a selectman almost nine years and, um, I was kind of getting sick of looking at probably 15 colors on a map. I mean, water wasn't blue, it was gray. I wasn't really sure what I was looking at.
Well, it is gray. Everything's gray, you know that.
Green, we're here today to solve that problem, Mr. Collins. So, and again, seriously, it, it, it's crystal clear, you can look at the map. Thank you for that because I, I can imagine the Sewer Commission, you, you, you must have been inundated with questions about, am I included, am I not included? They can look at a map and if you can't find your home, then I can't help you. Right? I mean, it's, it's pretty clear. So, um, again, I, I don't have any other questions. Is anybody on the board or select board?
I don't.
I'll look.
I have, I have another couple of questions. And this may be blue sky, so consider it in, in that, in that framework. And I must again thank Jared for the work that you've done, GHD for the work you've done, and thank you, Town Manager, for clarifying the points that needed to be done so that the town people know where we started with Phase One, Phase Two, and where we're going. The question I have is, okay, so we're, we're working our way toward the 90, I mean, sorry, the 42% nitrogen removal. However, the watershed permit requirements from the state, say 20 years, 75% reduction. Where does this all fit in with that in the future? So they said blue sky. The crystal ball right now, but just the ballpark idea.
Concurrently with this project, we're also working on an update to the 2015 plan, which is part of the methodology. Every time you complete a phase, you relook at your assumptions. Um, we've been working with the Director of Natural Resources to quantify how the shell fishing program will move forward, looking at fertilizer, fertilizer reductions, stormwater reductions, and then potential future searing in both watersheds. So that'll also be upcoming. And then, um, working with a financial consultant to look at how those would be phased, the future phases, in a fiscally sustainable manner.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And then my last question is to you, Mr. Town Manager. What, what specifically are you looking for in terms of a decision by the Sewer Commission at this point?
Um, I'll defer to the superintendent, but I need a decision regarding what you're going to do in terms of betterments because that obviously is relevant to what we tell the folks in terms of the cost. And for the board, I need you to approve and, uh, keep on the warrant, uh, the article as proposed in the amount that was provided tonight. And you'll be given the opportunity to do that on March 11th, and you must execute by March 18th.
So we don't, we won't execute it?
No, this is, this is basically for your information. And in case you had any questions from the presenter. And then subsequently, um, I do need action quickly by the Sewer Commission. And then obviously, I need action from the board relative to the respective article.
Sure.
As the Sewer, the Sewer Commission has, is currently planning the next meeting to address this. If we can speed that up and have a special meeting and within advertisement time constraints through the town clerk, we'll do so.
Thank you. So to answer that question, so tonight, basically, like I said, we're looking for the endorsement preferably from both boards to be able to put in the warrant article book, you know, that, you know, both the select board and the Sewer Commissioners support this article. I, I feel it goes a long way. As far as the Sewer Commission goes, what actions we need. At that meeting, we, yes, we wanted to just have open to us that door to whether or not we can look into betterments. It's not saying that we're going to give a betterment, nor right, right now am I asking or going to ask that night to break out, is it 50/50, 70/30, or how it's going to look? We just want to be able to look at it. I feel that to make any other decision beyond that is premature and could be painting ourselves into a corner to a cost that might not be best for all. Because even if we do sign a better, we got to remember that those that go on a sewer, yes, they do get immediate, you know, benefits, you know, property values go up, maybe the ability to add another bedroom or something. Yes, they do get direct benefits, but they also have additional costs tying in that sewer. So what we want to do is we just want to take, have the chance to weigh the, the different payment options, what'll, how it'll affect the tax base based off this amount per betterment per person. And then what should that betterment be set to if we at all, if it's decided that's the best way to go with it? And, uh, because one of the key things we have to do in order to file is we have to do, uh, we have to file to basically say, these betterments will not exceed this amount. So it's good for us to at least calculate that best amount. And then we can always reduce it or, or whatever going forward. We at least got to get that, that looked at. And I think that come town meeting, those are the questions people are going to ask. Uh, the other part I heard tonight was a question about the, uh, just that confusion of information and getting things out there between different phases. We, we are actively working and trying to approve, especially for the Phase Two, but this will hopefully have a Phase One, a method that the communication will be real-time as to what's going on in the district through GIS. So as we're building, it'll be live streamed, what, what's going on, when. Uh, all forms and documents will be out there, ready for everybody's access. And I plan on having a demonstration, hopefully, or not a demonstration, the actual product built and ready to go for Phase One prior to town meeting. And not standing up there making, you know, promises that people go, oh, sure. Uh, so I want to actually show that we're, we're followed through with it. And that way, everybody has a clear understanding, uh, going forward.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I do want to give a shout out to our consultant and to GHD because, uh, we've been able to meet the timeline and it wasn't necessarily easy. So they were put under, uh, reasonable pressure by May to make sure that things get done. And, um, I do appreciate it. Um, I know that sometimes it was challenging and difficult, but thank you.
Along those lines, I'd like to add that the Sewer Commission has enjoyed excellent support from you as a select board, from our Town Manager's office, and particularly from the Town Planner's office. Uh, we really have had a lot of help, especially in the challenges we faced in the last year. And I think all of us, I speak for all of us to say we're very appreciative of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want a motion to approve tonight?
We're not looking for any action.
No, on the article?
Well, you-
Because we have the figure now.
I just want to make sure we've got that posted properly.
I mean, as a, as a joint meeting.
You can.
We can?
You can. Yes, you can.
Motion to approve and recommend, um, the 96.1 dollar amount associated with the town meeting warrant article as recommended by GHD.
Second.
All right, we have first and second. And just for clarification, um, it's just, it's officially, it's going to be Article Four?
Yes.
That's what it states here.
Yeah, I know that we were potentially, uh, bringing an article for you to consider, um, that's not related to this, um, but, okay. So it is Article Four.
Okay, just, and if not, let's make sure it's still-
Yes, no, it's, it's Article Four.
All right, so we have first, second, any other?
Motion to amend to reflect Article Four reference.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whedon. All right, first and second, any other discussion? Not hearing any, Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes. Yes.
And I'm a yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, would you like our Sewer Commission to take a vote?
If you're willing.
Sewer Commissioners, will entertain a motion or a discussion?
Entertain the motion.
He was entertaining. He just seconded his entertainment. Do we, so we have a motion from Catherine? And a second from Mr. Tool? Although, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Great. Thank you. Success.
What of the ballot question?
Do you want us also to do the ballot question for May 11th? To add it?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to add the wastewater 96.1, um, article on the ballot question for May 11th, 2024 at the town election. Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous.
Two and one half? This is going to be outside two and a half, the funding?
It's on the ballot question, I'm, I'm assuming you asked-
It's a debt exclusion.
Yes.
It is a debt exclusion.
Yep.
I don't have that kind of free cash.
Questions, comments, or a motion from our Commissioners?
All set.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve, um, the ballot question for May.
Thank you, Catherine. Second, Mr. Tool, thank you much. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Everybody's in for clean water, clean Mashpee?
How many unanimous votes in this, in a row? Mr. Chair?
Go for number two. Do we have anything else on the agenda?
No, a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you need one from us? Sewer Commissioners, will entertain a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?